To order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright, first item is the approval of the minutes.
Good.
First and a second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Approval of order of agenda.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yesterday, uh, I met with, uh, county coroner, Dr. Sins, and she resigned her position yesterday as county coroner. And so, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, have Dr. Stelly Starch, uh, she'll be sworn in today as the new county coroner.
Okay.
I don't know. It can still be in the same area, but Dr. Sins will not be here.
Okay, so we're taking off Chief Coroner, which one did you say? I apologize. Chief Coroner, okay. Okay, thank you. So we'll just do the, very good. That was a motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, with your permission, I'd like to add, under item nine, so it'd be basically nine B.
Yep.
Um, the discussion about, uh, the, uh, jail contract.
Yes.
With the state.
Yes, that was, uh, just a, an error on the agenda that we were planning on talking about, so. Very good. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Merry Christmas. Um, now, Merry Christmas, right? Uh, approval of consent agenda, bills over time, um, employee status change, financial report, and beer liquor license.
So moved. Beat you Cindy, you want to second it?
Alright, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, motion passed unanimously. And I believe we did not get any citizen comments, so we will go right ahead with Riddler's audit.
Alright, good afternoon. Um, similar to prior years, I guess I plan to go through just some highlights of the audit report. Um, I'll end up running through things relatively quickly, so feel free to slow me down and ask questions as you have them. I'll also open it up for questions at the end as well. Um, a couple of things before I get started with the audit report, uh, we didn't have any difficulties performing the audit, no disagreements with management. We appreciate all the, the assistance we get from the finance staff and, and, uh, timely responses, it does help get this thing done, uh, in a timely manner, so appreciate all the help that we get there. There was, was new, or one new accounting standard related to compensated absences this year, it really didn't affect your financial statements in a material way, I just wanted to point that, that out, that there wasn't a standard that we had to look into. Um, historically, we've always set up a liability for the amount of vacation or sick leave that's going to get paid out upon termination. Um, the new standard required us to look at anything that doesn't get paid out upon termination as to what you might use in the future, so really was just an accounting exercise that didn't have any material effect, but, uh, like I said, I wanted to point that out. Um, into the audit report then, um, pages two through five is the independent auders' opinion, uh, where we've issued an unmodified opinion. It's considered a good or clean opinion that the, uh, financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It is management's responsibility for the financial statements as well as the footnotes within these. Um, and our responsibility is to ensure that they are reasonably stated, which is what our opinion is stating, so we believe that they are. And Clean does, uh, a nice job of putting these together, helping, uh, with that process. Um, the next, uh, section is, starts on page six, this is the first audited financial statement, which is the statement of net position. This is what's known as a full accrual financial statement, so it, it has your capital assets and long-term debt, related net pension liability, et cetera. Um, if you look on the bottom of the page, you're going to see the overall net position. The first column is your primary government, uh, one hundred two million eight hundred twelve thousand eighty dollars. The next two columns are your two component units that also are part of our audit, uh, related to the Water Resource District and the Fair Association, so you can see Water, uh, Resource District has about nineteen point five million dollars in net position, Fair Association about three hundred fifty one thousand dollars. If you flip the page, you're going to see the changes in the current year, um, for each one of those sections. Uh, about five lines to the bottom, you can see the overall change for the governmental activities was a positive seventeen million six hundred seventy four thousand five hundred fifteen dollars. One thing to take away here is that whenever you get grants for capital-related activities, you're going to see like these big increases because the grant comes in as revenue, but your expenditure is getting put on your, uh, balance sheet as an asset. And so that gets depreciated over time, but on a one-year statement, you're going to see this big increase, so just wanted to point that out. The other thing, three lines to the bottom, you can see that change within the financial reporting entity. One of the things we, uh, reclassified from the prior year was there was a custodial fund, which typically are funds that you hold for others. Um, I believe it was prairie dog funds that, uh, ended up being spent solely on county activities, or, or, so that got reclassified into your own financial statement, so that's what that is. Basically taking the dollars from the custodial fund in the prior year, moving it to the, uh, primary government this year. Then we get into the, uh, fund financial statements, um, and this is where we get into your budgetary level of control, et cetera. Uh, page eight, two lines to the bottom, you're going to see the overall fund balances. Uh, the first column there is your general fund, uh, a positive fund balance of sixteen million one hundred sixty six thousand nine hundred fifty three dollars. The second column is your jail expansion fund, it is in deficit at, uh, two thousand twenty four. Primary reason for this is this was, there's a timing difference when you're drawing funds down on your loans. And so you're expanding the funds first, then you're drawing down the loan funds. Those loan funds don't show up as a receivable, so basically you have this deficit until that gets drawn down, which I think all got drawn out in early two thousand twenty five, so just want to point that out. Uh, then you have special revenue funds, uh, primarily grants, et cetera. A positive fund balance of six point four million dollars, and then you have other governmental funds, which are a combination of smaller funds, um, about one point eight six million dollars of fund balance. Um, going to page ten then. This is the change within each one of these funds. Uh, about five lines to the bottom, you can see the general fund was down about seven hundred nine thousand five hundred eight dollars. You're going to see how that compared to your budget here in a second. Uh, the jail expansion fund did have quite a bit of spending, uh, which is, you know, common for a, uh, capital projects fund. Uh, spent about, uh, fifteen, or actually overall twenty one point five million dollars of spending in two thousand and twenty four. Um, a lot of that was, uh, recovered with some debt proceeds, about six million dollars, and like I said, there's going to be some more debt proceeds in two thousand twenty five. The special revenue fund, uh, was down about two million dollars for two thousand twenty four. A lot of that was related to some capital outlay, and then your other government funds were down about seven hundred twenty thousand dollars for two thousand twenty four. Um, as I kind of mentioned before, you also have funds that you're holding for others on pages twelve and thirteen. And so these funds would be like property taxes that you're receiving for the school district or the city, et cetera. And, uh, page twelve shows you got about, uh, almost fifteen million dollars of taxes received in advance that just hadn't been sent out at year end, so those are being held for others and then sent to the related entities early in two thousand twenty five. The next several pages, pages fourteen through forty three are the footnotes to the financial statements, and I don't plan to go through much detail here, but if you're looking for your debt schedules, capital asset activity, et cetera, we could circle back to any, uh, page and we can go through that. Uh, but for right now, let's go to page forty four. Page forty four starts the, uh, budgetary comparison schedule, and so the first schedule that we have here is related to the general fund. And so the bottom right number that you see there, two million seven hundred sixty thousand four hundred eighty two dollars. That is what you were, ended up over budget, so you projected to be about down three million four hundred sixty nine thousand, ended up down at seven hundred nine thousand. A, a lot of this, um, I think was related to just capital asset activity that maybe didn't happen during the year like you thought. Uh, also was some additional grant money that was, uh, received, about two point one million dollars, I think some COVID funds were spent down, et cetera, so that could be a, a large reason for that. Um, expenditures in total were about forty three thousand dollars, um, different from what you'd expected, so pretty close on your overall expenditure budget for the general fund. If you flip the page then to page forty five, we also show the special revenue funds. These are a little harder to budget just because you're not always sure what grant money you're going to get, and so you're kind of, um, you're over in both the revenues and expenditures, um, which makes sense as you get additional grant money, you spend down that grant money, and that's kind of what happened here. Uh, uh, revenues were about eleven million dollars more than budget. Expenditures were about eight point five eight, uh, over budget as well. Also a positive variance about two point six million dollars for, for two thousand twenty four. Um, then we start on page fifty two, getting basically to the compliance section of the report. Page fifty two is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And so anytime you spend over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is changing to a million dollars here for two thousand twenty five, you're required to have a special single audit, which is a compliance audit basically within your financial statement audit. Uh, we tested the, uh, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, um, and have an unmodified opinion on those funds, so there was no findings or issues when we did that testing. And then lastly, pages, uh, fifty four and fifty five, this is the government auditing standards report. Um, basically an overview of your internal control structure at the county. Uh, we have three repeat findings, and the first one's just related to the fact that we make material journal entries during our process of the audit to ensure that everything's, uh, stated in accordance with GAAP. Um, the second two are related to the Water Resource District, which is, like I said, included in your financial statements, uh, related to separation of duties, just because there's basically one person handling all the activity. And then we make adjusting journal entries for that audit as well. And so, um, I did actually present the water board report last week to their, uh, uh, commission, and, uh, basically discussed some, some ways maybe we can help get out of the separation duties finding, et cetera. Uh, but like I said, that was a pretty quick run-through of the, uh, audit report, I'd be happy to answer any questions or circle back to any page if you'd like.
Thank you. As usual, very detailed and brief. Brevity is what I'm mostly thanking you for.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions or comments follow up? Alright. Be simple, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I was in office. Ms. Womsted, are you?
I'm Dr. Wade Strouch, I'm Dr. Strouch of Grand Forks County, North Dakota.
I'm Grand Forks County, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Grand Forks County Coroner.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Grand Forks County Coroner.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would it be a possibility to send Dr. Sins a thank you letter on behalf of Grand Forks?
Absolutely. Absolutely, that would be a wonderful idea, thank you for, for saying that.
I get you over there again with this one. A little slower than the camera.
Alright, so the next item on our agenda here is the jail discussion. Um, I think I would like to open up, if Ms. Womsted, would that be okay with you to kind of give a brief synopsis as to where we are right now and maybe the last few discussions that you've had with some of our friends from the state, please?
Absolutely, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, if you recall, the last time the contract with DOCR was discussed, the all of you of the board shared some concerns with regard to the release provision. Um, uh, with regard to DOCR's ability to release people to Grand Forks County or the surrounding area. Um, and so, uh, a number of weeks ago, I was in contact with the attorney for the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. They had indicated that, um, they wished to revisit that provision of the contract. Um, and so they updated that portion of the contract to, um, essentially address the concerns of the board with regard to releasing people, um, to our community. Um, the update was that they would return them to the area where they initially resided prior to their incarceration. Um, it's my understanding and my review that the rest of the contract remains the same as what was previously reviewed by the board.
Sorry. Alright, open for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think the proposal just before this one, uh, it was a indication by the state of North Dakota that that was their final offer. And, um, so I think from that point, uh, we have moved on, I think, uh, Sheriff Schneider has, uh, done some extra things to, uh, uh, get some federal, uh, people in the correctional center, and so, uh, I guess at this point, I would say that, uh, that, uh, that ship's already sailed, so. Uh, I would like to hear from Sheriff Schneider, uh, about what's taken place at the correctional center, so.
Yeah, very good. Sheriff Schneider, please.
Commissioner Ross, Madam Chair Hagan, um, thank you, I will give you guys some updates if I, uh, may approach. Uh, I'm going to try to stay in a couple lanes here because there's a lot that happens at the jail on a regular basis, so what I'm going to hand out is, I had our captain pull our current revenue, uh, that should be paid or will be getting paid, uh, that is our revenue from housing inmates for other facility, or other uh, institutions, different counties, cities, state and federal partners, including the Department of Corrections. And you will see our revenue up to date, which it has changed because this was yesterday. So when I inform you of how many inmates were housing for other facilities, that number has increased today already. Uh, so you'll see a breakdown of the agency, the billing rate, what they pay per day, how many days we've housed, uh, inmates for these people, and the total as of yesterday, what they've paid. Uh, you'll see that some of them are doubled up, and they'll have the abbreviation of ICC. And that is an inmate that requires more intensive custody care, which means they are eating up two beds. And so, uh, the administration at the jail, it worked out contracts in the past with these entities, where if you're eating up two of our beds, we, we have to charge you more because we can't use that bed. So you will see that noted on here, uh, there is a different rate for some individuals regarding weekend or weekdays, so I'll, uh, approach and hand these out to you. So part of the intent of, uh, printing this out is just to, to, just to notify the county commission that, uh, the county correctional center does have partners throughout the region and throughout the state, including federal partners and state DOCR to date. And we have been bringing in income, if you look at, and I, I apologize, I did not review the budget forecast for revenue, uh, this year, I believe it might have been seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we estimated one million for next year. If you look at this, we've already exceeded that, uh, we're over one point three million of revenue to date, as of yesterday, sorry, I'll keep going back to that. Um, so we, we did have to make a modification uh, under the direction of, uh, Captain Hillley's suggestion a few weeks ago. Our female population, I believe I might have made you aware the last meeting, had increased to the point where we had nowhere else to house females or males if they were brought in. So they made an emergency call to move them to Pod Four, what that has done is that has increased our bed count, total bed count that we can use, from I believe is forty two now to eighty two in that area, which has allowed us to house these females. Uh, we do not have the staff currently to run all four pods. Uh, so we have shut down Pod One, I did make you aware of that. Uh, Mr. Gresheski and his team, along with correctional employees, have been working on maintenance and upkeep of Pod One. Since we cannot staff it, we might as well make improvements since they haven't been done in nineteen years. Uh, so that's currently taking place out there. Uh, what else has evolved is we were reached out to by our partners uh, in Walsh County last week, and we were notified that their jail was going to be going under reclassification. And they asked if we could house all of their current inmates, which made me a little nervous, uh, I heard that the count was nine, so I relaxed a little bit. But, uh, they were saying it was imminent, and we actually took in all of their inmates, which was seven at that time. Uh, they brought down, I believe it was three on Wednesday, and the remaining four last Friday, uh, which is under contract with them. Uh, currently, out of county holds, this doesn't count feds or state people. Uh, we are housing fourteen. Eleven are currently from Walsh County, we had some inmates from them prior, yes.
Uh, Sheriff Schneider, just out of curiosity, I want to circle back to the part that you talked about with Walsh County. Um, so we're getting all of them.
We have all of them.
Um, is that your way of nicely saying that their jail's basically no longer going to be usable until they build a new one?
Uh, Mr. Braun might be able to provide more direction on this. No, that doesn't mean it's not usable. They, from, from what I believe I have interpreted is that they are being reclassified, meaning they are not able or capable of providing twenty-four hour on the clock, uh, coverage for people that are housed there. So they have been downgraded to a facility that can only house individuals for a certain amount of hours. Obviously, anybody under sentencing that can't post bond or waiting trial, you're not sending them home after eight hours, so.
Is that, do you know, is that due to staffing or the facilities?
I, I believe it's due to current staffing issues, which they're hoping to remedy. And if their staffing is like ours, we don't know how long that will be.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, interrupting.
Nope, that's fine. Uh, currently, we are housing, uh, five individuals for our partners at the state penitentiary. Uh, again, these numbers have already changed that I'm going to tell you, so uh, there's people coming in and out of those doors every hour. Uh, so this is, this is close, okay? Uh, so currently we have approximately two hundred and thirty seven in-house, I believe that number is now down to two twenty six because our friends at Immigrations and Customs took eleven out this afternoon. Uh, we had at the time that this report was done at ten o'clock, we were housing uh, for ICE and the federal, and the marshals, we had forty eight inmates today. Uh, other counties, like I told you, was, was up to fourteen. And, uh, out of state people, people that are arrested here on warrants from another state, we currently have two of those in our custody as well. They do get billed out. Uh, so we do have several partnerships, obviously, we, we work with, we worked with Walsh County. Uh, the only reason we were able to do that is because we made the move, Captain Hillley directed us to open up Pod Four, which provided some, uh, additional housing, we did have to make a few adjustments to accommodate all of Walsh Counties, but I feel like we were kind of lucky to make that modification and help our neighbors who would have had to start looking around the state, uh, to house these people, because they couldn't kick them all loose.
And they would help us too if it was roles reversed.
Right. Um, I have had a few conversations with our friends at the state, uh, they were curious where we were at, what we were doing. I informed them that you learn more every single day, that you're in that facility. And now that, that fourth pod is open and the curtains are pulled back, we have found several, uh, issues that we're trying to address as far as, uh, how it was built, just, just different things, modifications we need to make. Uh, the primary concern right now is that, uh, that's been brought to my attention by the staff at the jail and by the captain, and that I've observed myself, is that that pod was built to be minimum security. The individuals, and I believe, and Mr. Braun can probably speak to this, I believe the latest modification was to bring in inmates that were more minimum security level, uh, in need of treatment, et cetera, to possibly fit that, that bill a little bit easier. Um, but currently having it housed with, with females and nonviolent criminals in there, we've already noticed some changes that we need to make. If we were to provide that, uh, space to the state pen, uh, I'm not sure what other modifications we would need to make. I did let them know that we, we have a good partnership with them, we're not going to stop housing inmates for them, I have no intention of doing that, we currently have some in custody. And with more open beds potentially in the future, we have an existing contract that they currently, as you see on here, that, that we currently abide by and we help them out when we can. We have no intention of, uh, throwing that contract out the window either. I'm just not quite sure if, if the, even the most recent contract proposal is in the best interest of Grand Forks County, um, to proceed forward with. And that's due to, you know, unforeseen circumstances that we are unaware of. So we, we don't know until we occupy that space and we get people in there and moving around and, and see, is this actually going to work or is this not going to work?
Can you remind me again, I know we've talked about this previously before with the administrator, but two hundred and twenty-six inmates as of today, what is that number that's like? The, what is that limit?
Well, we don't talk about functional capacity.
Okay. Is there? That's what I'm trying to get at, like, the number we have now, and then the number we would.
Yeah, we'll be up to three, about three hundred and seven, right now, we have about, did I turn this off?
You're good.
Okay, right now we have, uh, well, two twenty-five, then we added forty, approximately forty on top of what we had, so we're at like two sixty-five, somewhere in there, that we can currently house. That is not functional capacity. That's, that's what we're capable of housing. Um, and we're, we're not there. And, and I know that, you know, our friends at the state, uh, presiding judge, court admin, their attention has, uh, watching the numbers, they have noticed the rise. Yeah, we're currently housing, uh, including, uh, electronic monitoring, which they come in and their process and they're technically under our custody. 249 this morning, that's a big number. That's the highest number I think that, that I've ever seen at the jail. And that's due to having the additional space in Pod Four, even without having Pod One being around right now.
Ms. Womston, I think you had talked about a study that had been done, I believe in 2017 about the amount of bed space that the county would need on an annual basis. I, can you talk about that a little bit? Cause I think we've far exceeded those bed requirements.
Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, I believe that's correct that the, this board or your predecessors, uh, commissioned a study back in around 2017, if memory serves me correctly. I don't have at the ready the exact numbers, but my recollection was that, uh, this expert in the field of corrections estimated, uh, the county population, a portion of the inmates at the jail to increase approximately four, uh, inmates per year. My understanding is that since that study was completed and Andy could speak more specifically to it, my understanding is we've exceeded that estimated increase of four inmates per year. Which was the basis for the board moving forward with the expansion to the correctional center, knowing, um, we'd need that additional space, but I don't have the, the current stats at the ready, but my recollection was that the stats reflected, we've exceeded that um, expectation.
So, correct. And, and you know, something, something to note, and I've mentioned it, right? Is that we have fed inmates that are under US marshal hold or ICE detainer holds. Okay? We, we can call our partners, our federal partners and let them know that we need bed space and these people need to leave. If we have a higher need locally, we can have them placed elsewhere. Typically they're fairly responsive and they'll move them in a day or two. Okay? Uh, so that does give us a little bit of flexibility with our housing numbers. I mean, we could tell them to come get all 40 plus out in the, by the weekend. And they'd be gone and our numbers would be the lowest we've seen them probably since 2025, right? But if we have the space and we have the staffing and open beds, uh, we try to produce some income to help offset some of our costs of running the facility. Is there any questions on the billing rate? That you've, you've noted, is there any concerns?
I do have one question, Sheriff Schneider. Um, the, the ICE billing rate is $100 per day. I believe you had said that was being renegotiated. Am I correct in that?
Yep. So that rate is set, I, I can't remember how many years it's locked in. It's either two or three years. That is set to expire December 31. Uh, we prepared the documents and information that they require and we sent it to them the first week of October. They verified reception of that. Uh, we put in the amount that we would like to have negotiated for per day billing. Uh, once they review it, they'll reach out to us and they will counter offer us and, and we'll figure out a rate to agree on.
Thank you.
Are you, are you comfortable sharing that amount that you guys threw their way? If you're not, don't worry.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's just in negotiations. So, uh, again, yeah, I, once, once we're closer, yeah, I'd feel more comfortable exploring it, but it, uh, is, it is higher than any current rate on here outside of the ICC rates.
Ms. Womston, sorry to keep calling on you, but, um, the one thing that I, in conversation with this on a local level, the concern is safety. Can you, I know we've probably talked about this again, but can you describe some of the things that your office, the sheriff's office, the folks at the courthouse have been doing to mitigate the cases that you have, the folks in the jail and maybe some people getting out sooner than late, than they should, so.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, we did speak to this a number of months ago when, when this, uh, the negotiations began with the Department of Corrections. I vocalized some concerns about public safety, um, on, on the basis that, um, we need this extra space for our local inmates because we have, unless we're going to look to contract with another facility, we have to either decide if we're not prioritizing this space for our county inmates. We have, have to either look to reducing their sentences or reducing their bond. Um, if you recall at that meeting, Kelly Hutton, who is seated in the back, um, here, she's our court administrator for Grand Forks County and many other counties in the area. Um, she shared with the board a number of months ago, um, the efforts the court has taken to, uh, help alleviate the population at the jail. Um, I don't want to speak for her, but my recollection of the things that she shared, um, is that the, the, our presiding judge, Judge Hager is always mindful of the population and has adjusted the bond schedule accordingly, um, when the population is at a point that's not manageable. Um, the court has also, um, worked on establishing specialty courts, looked to utilize community service rather than um, incarceration on appropriate cases. Um, I'm sure there's many others that I'm not thinking of off, off the top of, of my head, but I think the court system has certainly been a good partner with the county to try to alleviate some of the population concerns at the jail. But with that said, there's only so much the court can do in the interest of public safety. There's only certain cases and certain individuals, we can divert through community service or drug testing or, or EHM or, or whatnot. Um, there is a sect of that population that does need to be incarcerated. And if we don't have room for them, it becomes an issue of public safety.
Any other comments or?
Well, this isn't going to be fun for some of you, but as much as I don't like the state jerking us around, I don't like us jerking the state around. We've got more than enough beds for the county prisoners. If we had to, we could not take some of these other ones and take the state ones. The revenue, whatever revenue, based on these numbers, whatever revenue you generate, is it going to be less than the 60 prisoners? Which is going to be almost 2.2 million dollars a year. So you're going to have less revenue. We have more than enough room for our prisoners. We, the only issue is having enough guards. That's the only issue. Uh, in the contract, it states that if we have an issue with staff, uh, with, uh, beds, they're, they'd be willing to reduce the number. So like I said, I didn't appreciate what they did to us, but that doesn't mean I'm doing it back to them. And so this is what we asked for. And they gave us exactly what we asked for. My opinion, it took too long. But I, but I, I just, you guys do what you want, but I, I'm not voting to refuse this contract. You, you have almost 2.2 million dollars a year guaranteed payment on a 2.75 million dollar bond. Guaranteed, as long as we have staffed. I'd be careful about throwing away guaranteed money. So I, uh, like I said, I, I am, I'm really frustrated where we're going. I don't even know why we bother bringing up this, what we're going to do. We're going to start re, relitigating, so to speak, the whole issue again. And, um, so I, I'm ready to do this contract. And if we're not, then I'll, I'll just vote no, but I, I think, uh, we can almost make our bond payment if we do this. Uh, and once again, the only issue to me is guards and I'm meeting with Mr. Ford again afterwards. I, it's time to get going on this and I got my ideas, what we gotta do to get more guards hired. Uh, so uh, I just fundamentally disagree. Uh, Walsh County, I personally contacted the county commission twice. And it was rebuffed by Walsh County. And now they got a problem. Well, maybe she'll listen the first two times I called. I know I'm not the only one that called. Uh, uh, trying to help them out. So, uh, I do not think this plays well with the state. It certainly wouldn't mean if I was in their position that we said this, you must do this, then they did it and now they bring it back. And now we're going to scrap it. So I'm going to vote yes. I don't know where the rest of you are at, but, uh, we gotta keep in mind, big picture. A lot more issues with the state besides the jail. Thank you.
Madam Chair. I'd just like to say that, you know, not this offer, but the offer before, they said that was their final offer. So strides have been made by the sheriff to do other things with that facility. And as I previously said, that ship has sailed. And I think we need the space to take care of what goes on in Grand Forks County and our neighbors. So, um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reject that contract.
I'll second the motion.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, so Mr. Braun is online and maybe, maybe he could have a conversation, but I would, I would rebut a little bit of what Commissioner Birkie said. I've had conversations with Mr. Braun. I've talked to Mr. Anderson. I've talked to, um, Mr. Holt, uh, all partners at DOCR. And there's no hard feelings there. No, he said, he said, whatever. We understand that when this came up, this facility was built to a certain spec. The county is, was going to be broke. We are looking for a way to save that. As this has evolved, some things have changed and they understand that things do change. And I, I talked to Mr. Brown and I said, we are more than happy to house prisoners for you under the, under the current contract. If, if the, and it's not up to me, right? If the commission chooses to accept this contract, we'll move forward. We'll be, we'll have more government control, less local control for eight more years. And, and DOCR will have these beds for eight years and the state will control them. We'll have less local control to decide what best suits our, our local people. Um, but we're more than happy to partner with them. Uh, I don't think anybody's mad at anybody. We all understand that as things move forward and facilities open and staffing problems arise or whatever it may be, that things can change. So, uh, I mean, I'd, I'd encourage you to ask Mr. Braun if he has any input as well.
Mr. Braun, would you like to have any, any words for us?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair and, and members of the committee. Um, for the record, I'm Colby Braun, the director of the North Quarter Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Um, yeah, and Sheriff Schneider is correct that, I mean, this isn't, there, this is about just us trying to work together and, and, and in terms of us, it was our final, um, as we were working through the contract, the thing that I think just for the committee to understand is that we don't, we can't, if a person gets released from prison, they're free. And so for us to agree to say that they won't be in Grand Forks, it would be very difficult for us to say that a person won't be in Grand Forks because we have no control over where they're going to be. So contractually, we had to go back since what you guys had decided was how could we do it? And so the real, the only way that we could figure out that we could do it is if they went to the jail earlier in their sentence to do programming. And once they're done with programming, then we bring them back um, to whether it's a James River Correction Center in Jamestown or, um, the state penitentiary, wherever that location where they're classified to be. And then they complete their sentence from there on, but there would be more of going there for that programming. I think some of the risks, that would be unfair of me not to, to say some of the risks with that is it is somebody that's earlier in their sentence, um, rather than somebody that's preparing towards the end of their sentence. And so there is some risk, just knowing that, that people earlier in their sentence generally have more behavior issues than as they're preparing to release. So I mean, I think that would be a risk in this doing it, but in order for us to meet, um, the request from the, from the commission was for us to really find that path. And that was the one way that we thought that we could do this. Again, at some point that person could get, you know, they will get released at some point. And they may end up anywhere within our state or the country, I guess. Um, but we felt that we could still meet what, what the commission was requesting of us. So hopefully that helps and gives you an understanding that that's the reason that we tried to find a path to this, but it certainly was not, um, how we originally thought about it, especially looking at, um, the, the layout of that, of, of the, of the addition of that pot four. So I'm going to be happy to take any questions if I didn't answer them or if this didn't help at all.
Any other questions for Mr. Braun? I would just like to say every conversation that I've had with our partners at the state has been a positive one, no matter what the type of conversation we're having, especially with this topic and knowing that at one point we were going to walk away, or they were going to walk away previously. No matter what happens, again, every single person has said, there is no hard feelings. We are still the same team, trying to hit the same goals, protect the same people, you know, help the same people get treatment and what have you. So if we walk away from this and however it ends, it's going to be the same tomorrow. We're still going to be partners. We're still going to move forward. We're still going to do the same things. We're not, you know, I'd say jerking people around. We are just having conversations about what we can do to improve our community, help our state partners out, what have you. Um, Sheriff Schneider on the finances thing, um, we have this bond payment. You're, I'm, I would assume you would be able to fill those beds pretty quickly and.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, with staffing, once we're able to have enough staffing to run four pods and everything else there. Yes, we will be bringing in more people. The marshals and ICE are still asking for more beds. Uh, today we had Walsh County bring down another individual that they arrested because they don't have a jail they can house them in. Uh, as you can see, their rates are a hundred and five dollars and some change. So we will continue to bring in additional inmates and we continue to fluctuate and assist with ICE. They brought in, I believe it's three new immigration holds yesterday. So we, we are continuing to work with our partners and like I told Mr. Braun, we'll continue to work with the state. There's a current grant opportunity that we're going to try to apply for before the deadline, which is in nine days, 10 days. Uh, which could potentially open up opportunities for more programming to get people to not come back. Our recidivism rate is to date, this calendar year is 70%. Seven out of 10 people there have already been there. Uh, that's, that's pretty consistent. So we don't want them to come back and we want to figure out why. So, uh, you know, working with, with the courts and local programs, uh, if we can remodel some space in our current facility to allow for more programming, I think that could help our community and help open up more beds for federal partners or state partners.
All right. Any other discussion before we ever vote? All right, we'll do a roll call vote about that.
Okay, so the motion is we do.
The motion, my understanding is to reject this contract and move forward with what we're currently doing under the sheriff's guidance, or if you want to frame that. All right, Mr. Birkie?
No.
Miss Beach?
Yes.
You're asked.
I'm going to put my confidence in our duly elected county sheriff and vote in the affirmative, um, even though this whole thing was something I brought up in the first place. But, uh, so I, I I'm not really excited to make this vote, but I am making it just the same because I, uh, I have a lot of confidence in, in Sheriff Schneider and his opinion. And, um, so I apologize to, uh, Mr. Braun and the DOCR that we couldn't come to a deal. Never really anticipated being the tiebreaker here. Um, but, uh, it, it, so much dust has settled since the original contract that we thought was the last and final one that I don't, you know, it was many, many weeks and the sheriff has, you know, made, spent a lot of time and made some progress on figuring out how, just how to monetize some of these beds. And I, I hope um, for Mr. Braun and everyone with the DOCR and the state that we can continue having a great relationship. We can continue to take your prisoners and we'll take them as needed as, as the sheriff stated. But, uh, yeah, my, my vote is, is in the affirmative.
Good. I am also a yes. So the motion passes for one with Mr. Birkey dissenting. Okay. Thank you all for the conversation. We will move on to the jail assessment. Speaking of the jail, old jail assessment, excuse me.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, I have with me today, um, AD2 S J. Cleven, as well as a partner team that he has put together for making this assessment. They're here to make a presentation to you for what options, uh, from an architectural and engineering standpoint would be. So I invite up, uh, Mr. Cleven to kick it off for us.
All right. Thank you. Uh, good to see everybody again. I got to admit, it's a little hard to follow up a guy in a 12 and a half gallon hat and a gun. So, but we're going to do our best. All right. Well, thank you. Um, yeah, as, as, uh, Bill introduced here, AD2S was contracted to, to organize a study of, of the old jail juvenile detention center. And we'll kind of get into some of the terminology and, uh, Michael J. Burns Architects are here, uh, Mike Burns himself and Luke Gullbrinson. Uh, they are the, kind of the subject matter experts on the floor plan. Uh, I'll go through some introductory things, hopefully be very brief in, in the lot of work that went into developing some very conceptual floor plans. And at this point in, in a study, I always urge this, these are not final. Okay. I, I think these are a really good point in time, uh, with a lot of work with Ms. Womstad and Mr. Gershewski. And as stated earlier, friends in the, in the, in the, in the jail or not the jail, the court system. Uh, we did meet several times to get us to a point in time here. So I, I just ask a favor, don't pick on the details because all that's going to change. If a project proceeds, the concept here is workable. We, it's feasible, it's defensible. It's going to make sense in the long term. Uh, that's our opinion. Of course, you folks will have liberty to form your own opinion. That's what elected officials do. So we'll just kind of get into it. Uh, you know, we were asked to reuse the facility, which means no square footage, no additions, stay within the footprint. Uh, and that is what, what we focused on. Primary goal of the study is identify how the, the entries in the, the facility can work better. Uh, right now there's not a lot of usable space. Uh, you go in there and it's clearly a detention facility. Served its purpose, but it's now no longer occupied. Better facilities are available. Uh, as Mr. Schneider just got through talking about. You know, they're non-functional, outdated, vacant, et cetera, not a lot of utility. Part of this, as always, anytime we're looking at a new facility is what can we do to enhance accessibility and conform the current ADA accessibility guidelines? Uh, so that's part of it too. Where we spent most of the time is talking about the third bullet list here on the second slide. Flow of people in and out of the link, that lower level of that connecting part that goes from the courthouse to the old jail. That probably had 90% of our discussion. Cause right now, right? You have public entering in there. You have staff and employees as well as incarcerated inmates who have to go to and fro detention into court. Uh, how do you get all those, those types of populations to work? Spent a lot of time on that. Uh, scroll to the third slide. At this point, every time we work downtown, I just remind people, Plan North is parallel to the streets. Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Third Street. East and West is parallel to Bruce Avenue, et cetera. And that's what the aerial image just shows us here. You folks who work and live downtown, you understand that. People who don't work and live downtown just need a gentle reminder. On the, we do then in the red box, kind of, well, first some terminology, detention center, AKA old jail. You'll see an abbreviation, DC Detention Center. Uh, you see the link, you see the courthouse. You see the, what we call the boiler addition, because that was its origin story. Uh, it was juvenile detention on the second floor. Uh, and then we kind of, that's this little aerial image, lower left corner of the slide. And then we proceed to the next slide. It just gives some kind of bullet lists of it. Uh, and then as Mr. Ford proceeded, these are existing conditions as is today, right now. So if you walked in the link, this is essentially what you would see. Uh, and as we scroll ahead, we get to a section of the building. And at this point, it's important to kind of, we all know this because again, we're in the now these facilities a lot. But to go from the courthouse into the second floor of the link, you got to go down some steps. And you'll see how we resolve that problem in concept here in a few slides. But because the ADA is required, which is a great thing, we had to solve that problem of steps. Uh, so there's the very, very brief background. Commissioner Russtead, I tried to make it shorter, but that's the best I could do. Sorry.
Well, I'm going to give you like a D minus.
All right.
Just teasing.
Hey, I'm used to it. I flunked calculus in college, so I've had a D before. But with that, we will turn over the architects, kind of walk through the concept and we will close with the discussion on cost, uh, which we could probably summarize it all the way by going to the last slide, but how we got to the cost is important to see the homework that puts credence. And again, I use the word defensibility a lot. We have to give you information that we ourselves can defend. So we'll, we'll get into that portion of the presentation next. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Luke Gullbrinson with Mike Burns Architects. And I'll carry you through the plan options we have that you have in front of you as well. First, we have the, the, uh, option A of the first floor. Uh, what you'll see there is a lot of red lines, red doors and, and gray around it. What we chose to do here was show you the remodeled space, uh, with the red lines indicating new walls, new doors, new rooms. The demolished walls are very faint, dash lines in the background, but jumping ahead here, what we'll see is that the, the plan, uh, option A and now option B, reuse the existing inmate entry. And I think that's the biggest point, uh, to present to you. Currently the inmates are brought into the garage ports of the, uh, old jail or detention center, escorted through the vacant detention center and into this link and, uh, and beyond, mingling with other pedestrians. If we move ahead to option C, uh, you'll see that this option moves the inmate entry from where it currently is through the detention center to what we're calling the north alley. So it would be a, an exterior Sally port that would function, uh, security wise, the same. However, it would cut down on the footsteps that these inmates are taking, uh, from A to B. And then the other benefit of moving the inmate entry to the north alley here is that that separation of, uh, pedestrian groups, so staff and public. Option D on the next slide is very similar, uh, just shows another version of a conference room. And moving ahead then to the second floor, this is where those stairs, oh, sorry, here we are. Uh, this shows you that north alley reconfiguration. So on the far left shows the orange squares and the garage and the path through that link to the courthouse. And then enlarged is what that north alley could be, adding a secure gate. Uh, room for two trucks as, uh, there is sometimes that that, that occurs as we were told. And, uh, into the link from that north side. So, uh, moving up to the second floor, this is where the, the ramp and the stairs comes into play with the accessibility. So, uh, right now there's no accessible access to the second floor of this link space or the, uh, second floor of the boiler edition, as we termed it. The elevator that is on the plan there does not serve that floor directly. And so with this ramp path, uh, that would create accessible space, uh, functional for, for court staff and, uh, victims advocate, uh, spaces and, and similar functions from the courthouse itself. One more slide shows that, uh, that extra space left over after the ramp would be installed could also serve as an office suite, depending on which, um, staff or group of staff may be moving into that space. The next slide focuses on the second floor of the boiler edition. So this is the second floor and below this is a noisy mechanical room. You know, that, that serves the, the whole facility. But what we're showing here is, is the opportunity to provide six additional offices, a conference room that is flexible. We've broken down from four to six people and then removable wall can bump it up for 10 to 12 people, depending on the meeting size. And, uh, recreates a forward looking function for this currently vacant space. On the next slide here, we'll show the last option we explored. And that is a, a new elevator and a shifted location of the elevator. And so we've reviewed these last, uh, plan options prior to this, assuming that the existing elevator remains where it is. And as you study the plans in time, uh, you'll see there's a lot of corners and, and jogs and things of that sort. This plan, uh, shows that in addition to accessing all the, the levels that we are trying to, uh, getting rid of the necessity of a ramp on the second floor, the efficiency of the resulting space surrounding the elevator is much better and much more flexible for whatever future needs may arise. So, um, the next slide is a enlarged version of what the first floor could be. Uh, moving the inmate entry from the north alley and, uh, the daytime entry for staff and public, uh, to the south. The residual space there labeled with a diagonal label, uh, offices and conference. There's a blank slate, so to speak. The next slide shows what the second floor would be. Not only do we get access to both the second floor of the courthouse and the second floor of the link, but it's also an expedited, uh, travel, uh, for those that are willing and able to take stairs. The previous option did not allow that. And so, uh, a lot of extra steps for better or worse with that ramped option. So the next slide here summarizes the comparison of the first floors. One, leaving the inmate entry where it is currently through the detention center in the old jail. And on the right, the design points of moving the inmate entrance, uh, to the north alley. There's pros and cons of both. And as Jay alluded to, we're here to present you with what we found and form your own opinions, but, uh, this is a, a pretty good pointed summary of, of the first floor. And, uh, what's done here is, uh, perhaps the most consequential relative to those other spaces. As we move to the next slide here and, uh, the opinion of cost, I'll invite Jay back up. So, thank you.
Thanks, Luke. Um, did we do better?
It's D.
On brevity, it's still a D. I'll darn it. Okay. Well, anyways, uh, so, so you'll see here lots of different variations of numbers, right? And kind of project one, project two, project three. Project one is basically retain the existing inmate travel path through the old jail, through the link into the courthouse. Project two is move the inmate travel to the north alley. You know, pass them through the existing link into the courthouse. Uh, and with that, we would move some staff parking, move ADA parking to the south as referenced in one of the other slides. Project three is with the elevator. And it, it's always curious to read body language and read the room. And I saw, saw a few shrugs on the elevator. But we did, we did want to present it to show a full range of options, right? It just, that's how decisions get made, right? Whether it's a bad option or a good option, you see it and you can say, well, at least we talked about it. It does have its virtue, but nonetheless, we're going to talk about the cost here for a moment. So you kind of read through the columns. Uh, we'll just kind of summarize some highlights here. If you look at the project total cost, it's a kind of a gray box, uh, with big black lines on the top. Okay. That would be the cost to build and execute the project one, two, or three. Does not include the boiler addition victim advocacy remodel. Okay. We'll summarize that subtotal next. And then you see a kind of an orange line that is taking consideration of a potential grant program that would offset cost of court improvements. If that grant became available, the 25% share of the county cost for that previous subtotal would be that total in the orange box. So using project one example, 230,000, 239,087 would be eligible from the cost of project one. Then we add in the cost of the second floor victims advocacy remodel. 749,500 and that is the kind of all in cost to remodel that second floor of the boiler addition. These general conditions, all those things we think go into a project budget, 749,500. And that's the same for all the three project options. And then you get to the kind of green box at the bottom. That would be the sum total of each project, county obligation plus victims advocacy to subtotal to those dollar figures at the very bottom. Without the grant, because I, I think that's a good information to have. Project one is round numbers, 1.8 million. You know, uh, project two is 2.01 million. Project three is 2.8 million without applying or successfully receiving the court improvement grant program. So that's kind of the summary of cost. And at this point in the project, I always kind of in a broad term, kind of come up with a talking point number. And project one and project two, it's $2 million without the courthouse improvement project, uh, grant. Project three is $3 million without the courthouse improvement grant. So, uh, for me at least, and we all have our own way of assimilating information, I really do like to summarize it into those sort of broad terms, especially this early in the project. And we'll kind of leave it at that. Take the floor for questions.
Got the question.
Madam Chair, what the, what the, what's the probability of getting that 25% grant?
Ms. Womstad or others, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with success rate or anything like that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ross, there are parameters to that grant. For, for one, there are requirements that some of that pot go to small counties. And I'm quite certain, I need to double check it, but I'm quite certain there's a limit to how much a county can be awarded. So taking in, Mr. Cleven, I assume the, the percentage for county obligation would be if we applied for the, a grant for the entire cost.
Correct.
Yeah. So I, I don't think, I think that would far exceed the limit as to what a county can get. Kelly, am I, there's no limit? Okay. Oh, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. But yeah, there, there are, there are requirements that small counties get some of the pot as, as well. So if we were awarded the 1.9, you'd see what our obligation would be for matching funds.
Sir, if you don't mind, I forgot my readers at home. And so, but I'm looking at project three and I might be reading this, this diagram incorrectly. But it looks to me like the elevator is just a remodel where I, whereas I thought, um, your, your counterpart said in his presentation that it would be moved to a different location. Am I, am I reading this incorrectly or did I misunderstand?
No, no. No, no, it is, it would be a new elevator in a new location. That residual remodel
Yeah.
is kind of remodeling the rest of the floor areas after the new elevator is installed.
Okay, so the elevator is included, that's the 600?
The elevator is indeed included, yes, sir.
Wow, that's not a bad price for moving a new elevator into place. Is that like Otis or Schindler or who?
I don't, it's brand agnostic.
Okay. I, yeah, I'm just surprised to see a number that's got that few digits in it when it comes to putting in an elevator. But your pros.
We did vet that with industry.
Okay.
You know, especially elevators and those sort of major specialties. It's, it's a bit, you're on a, you're on a thin limb if you kind of come up with that number on your own. So Mike and Luke did call vendors, did vet that with some other trades and contractors. So at this point, it's a reliable number.
Ross distracted me, he goes, we're not going to get the shaft. I missed everything what you just said, but no, I just wanted to clarify that I was reading this correctly, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I'll, I got a whole bunch of jokes now, but I'm going to leave those for later.
I don't know who could answer this. Maybe the folks that are moving the inmates. Is there a big issue with moving the inmates from the current location through all of those steps to the courthouse? Anybody, anybody can answer.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the current process exists because that's what we have to deal with. If if the county ever plans in the future trying to do something with the old jail space at all, I don't find it very reasonable and realistic to have us continue to bring inmates from the far end of the old jail, walk them through the entire space and down a hallway. It just doesn't make sense. So, I mean, like they did a great job explaining. If if you want to make it more functional, that area could, that that area needs to change. I did not have any input on any of this. So I have no issues with, you know, the north side being discussed. There is potential and maybe it was discussed. There's space on the south end where juvenile detention used to be, there's a parking lot there. I did hear them say that they were told to stay within the confines of what currently exists. But I mean, there is opportunity to make some modifications where we could get inmates in and out a little easier. Having an enclosed space right now is great, right? It is North Dakota. So if we're walking them 30 feet outside into the jail in a, into the courthouse in a secure area, they shouldn't get frostbited in that timeframe. But yeah, I I think that the county commission, no matter what direction you go, maybe for the next one, two or three county commissions should take into consideration, how are we going to make this more feasible and practical moving forward?
There is some follow up on that. And the, the moving inmate egress and entry to the north does give a better future proof solution. And cost wise, they're basically the same cost. You know, I mean, any variance is, we're talking sand and ditches off the block here. Our best guess, the difference in cost is like 60 grand. So at this point, right, again, big picture, it's the same project cost. We did build in and we did do some thinking on how that south parking gets modified to accommodate some ADA stalls. And I actually was over there Saturday with a tape measure. And I thought, I should maybe tell somebody, I'm over here in an old jail taking measurements just for the purpose of putting some reality to the study, right? So we know it's feasible to add parking. We have an idea how much square foot we need and we did build that price into project two. And project one could just as easily change the, get rid of the detention play area out there, right? It probably makes sense at this point to remove all the detention fencing just because. But all those project costs roll into that, again, that broad number of 2 million for project one or two, and then 3 million for project three.
Madam Chair, something else for, maybe more for Ms. Hutton to answer. So a lot of the commission's discussion around remodeling this was to make it feasible office and lease it to bring in revenue. So, and that's a commission decision. And probably from Ms. Hutton, if the commission, if that's the intent and you were to proceed with doing this, but leasing it, I don't know if we could use the courthouse improvement grant. It would only be used if it's to benefit the courthouse. Okay, I just wanted to make sure too, because that has been discussed by the board.
Catch, Tom.
I have a, I was more interested in just that second floor. And I don't know, I'm not going to be around, but at some point when you get the next judge and you get another courtroom, another judge's chamber, another clerk office, another jury room, et cetera, et cetera. If you remodel that bottom floor, where are you going to do with that? What are you, where's that going to go? See, if you leave that floor alone, then you have something, worst case scenario, you're going to knock down and build there. Of course, you could maybe go the other way because, but I'm just, I thought we were just going to be looking at the offices on the second floor. If we're going to go past that, we got a lot more deep diving to do because we can't think about what we're doing today. We got to think about what happens if we get another judge. So I just wanted to throw that out there because I don't want to be the guy that votes to spend $3 million. So six years later, we can bulldozer and spend a whole lot more than that.
There any other discussion with the assessment that we'd like to have today before we move on? You sure can.
Madam Chair, member of the commission, I was just looking through this last opinion of cost. And just to be clear, so for the 25% county obligation, I'm not sure if the grant will cover an elevator and the shaft. So that might be a consideration that would have to come out of your pocket. Yeah, sorry, shaft again, look at them. So that would be something we would have to talk about, but I didn't want you to vote on option three, thinking that that might not have to be included if that's what you were looking at. So that was my only clarification.
And again, this can be for anybody, but grants, I'm just thinking about ADA compliance. Do we, do we know of any grants that could potentially help with the changes in the building to bring us into ADA compliance or is that not?
No, ma'am.
All right.
That's, that's a subject that Ms. Womsted, Ms. Hutton and I have been dealing with for years is ADA compliance. There's, we've checked many times, there's, there's no.
Unfortunate.
Madam Chair, if, if we, if whoever writes that grant is specific as to what will go into that area, I would think that would make a difference, especially if it's the courts and or the state's attorney's office. That would make a significant difference in how the state would approach that grant, I would think.
Madam Chair, members of the board, just point of clarification on that. My understanding of the court facilities grant is that it only can be used to pay for court facilities. So any space that's utilized by our office wouldn't qualify. And I think that's why Mr. Clevin in the cost assessment separated out that victim advocacy space because that would have to be paid 100% by the county, unfortunately.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I can, to Commissioner Ross's question, yes, if if that's the commission intent. And Ms. Leon is is pretty good at writing grants and if she wrote the grant for this project, yeah, it would have to benefit court administration, the courthouse, judge, judges, juries. I believe too, Ms. Hutton, it could be used for changing the path of inmates. So, so there's, but if if the board was saying we're going to remodel and then lease or move some of our departments into it, then we couldn't use the grant. So we would have to be to benefit the courts.
I feel like we've talked about this before, but was there a timeline, Ms. Womsted? Maybe potentially a new judge or courtroom, things that you have a, or Ms. Hutton, obviously, ask you.
I defer to Ms. Hutton on that item.
So I've been approached to see if we're going to be asking for one as early as next biennium. But when Judge Hager and I talk about it, we're not there yet. In our opinion, we run a very efficient court across the street that's been recognized nationally. So I don't think we're there. I've offered to you, Madam Chair, a tour of the courthouse. We have a little bit more flexibility behind our secure walls with some changes that we've been making. Because if you recall, the space study that was done earlier this year really identified three areas of concern. There was the clerk office space, the conference space and the SA space, right? So we have actually had to move two more staff into our clerk's office just based on some statewide support changes. So we are going to be putting into place a work from home rotation. So they'll, that'll alleviate some of the space issues for now in hopes that that works a little bit. So staff will have an opportunity to work from home. And Allison, the clerk of court is here, it's one week every four week rotation. So we have a plan for that, which will save up a little space for us. With that, that frees up some office spaces that we have on the third floor. So we're going to be moving our staff attorneys around to recreate some conference space that we had previously that we had to convert to staff space. So we do have a little bit of a plan to buy us a little bit time. But to your point, Mr. Birkey, we do need a long term plan because eventually we will bust at the seams of that courthouse. And Ms. Womsted and I have had that conversation of, well, what's your plan for staff? We have some flexibility based on how much footprint we take over there. But I don't believe that you'll have that space beyond the five to seven years. But I would envision a judge here within five to seven.
Madam Chair, so I'm not sure how much time anyone else has spent up there. I've spent not a lot, but a little bit of time. And to me, I think you guys are just being complainers. You should sit on one another's lap like you're doing right now. No, I'm just joking. You guys are absolutely, you guys are like one cheek on one chair and your neighbor's got the other cheek on the other chair. And so, yeah, that isn't, that isn't feasible long term, especially as a community grows, there's no question about it. I echo Commissioner Birkey's sentiment that we must come up with something long term. Because as the community grows, as we hire more law enforcement, more state's attorneys, potentially another judge. I mean, the the other judge is an obvious one, right? Because you need a whole nother courtroom and you need another, you know, singular office. But just additional assistant state's attorneys and things like that. I mean, you can't expect them to, there's nowhere to put them, there isn't. And so I think we need to, as a commission, think long and hard about how we address this situation. And 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 I I think literally if we all went up there right now, if we walked across the street and went over there, we'd all agree and go, oh, my goodness, this is a problem that needs to be addressed. And so obviously I was teasing you at first, but I completely 100% agree. And Commissioner Birkey is dead on the money. We we have to look at what future commissions, we don't want to saddle them with a problem that is is a $50 million problem when we can maybe solve it for five. And so that's kind of where I'm at with things. If the grant's available, then I guess we don't rent that space out, we rent out space here instead. I I mean, we can be nimble. If there, if we're eligible for a grant, if it goes to use for the court and the and the court system and potentially a prisoner walkway or whatnot, I think that's the move. Because if we can capitalize on only having to pay 25% of the cost, I find me a loss there. To me, that's, that's, that's a huge win. We'll just have to raise everybody's taxes is all.
3%.
But no, we do, we do, we have to take care of it. It, it, it's just what's the best move? And and I don't have all those answers and, but hopefully between the five of us, we can figure out what that answer is. You know, the old county court used to be downstairs on the first floor of that facility over there. Nobody else probably remembers it, but I've been here too long, so.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, another point that we can talk about too is it doesn't have to be that we only submit one grant. If that's a route you want to go to, we've done a this or that option in a lot of my counties. So you could tentatively submit four different grant applications and let the committee decide. The funds for this grant come out of fees collected across the state in criminal cases. So that can vary. So I can't tell you how much money is in the fund today because people are still pulling out of it from the grants that we've had. We all were awarded one in this county last year for the chairs in the jury room. But the state did just approve in the last legislative session that they will be putting money into this fund separate because it's been a dwindling fund. And that will hopefully address the future judges that come because that's what it's going to be designated for, for courthouses and counties that were allotted a new judgeship. How are you just supposed to come up with $3 million, $5 million to make those accommodations? So there's going to be a separate fund in there. And to be clear, those will likely be larger counties getting those judges. So that would be the big four and then maybe the smaller three that fall behind that. So just to give you an idea for the future.
Thank you.
Right, is there any other discussion with our jail assessment?
Yes. Just one item to note, as, as Ms. Hutton noted, we can submit multiple applications, but the deadline is December 31st. So if we want to submit this as an application, the decision would need to come soon or else we'd have to wait till next December.
That was my next question was, when do we want to have a follow up conversation for this to make a decision?
So, so Madam Chair, I believe it was the last commission meeting, Ms. Leon presented some options for this coming deadline. The commission instructed her to go with the recarpeting. So I think if if it's just, just to manage the expectations, the commission's already said, go, go for it, Mr. Gresheski, they're, they're working on that. I mean, it's commission decision if you want to apply for this instead this year. But my suggestion would be flush this out more, have more conversations, firm things up and then apply for the grant next year.
Gracie, it looks like she's ready to tell us something.
Chair Hanger, Hagan, members of the commission. So especially given what was mentioned by Kelly and Allison, with potential dollars being separated out, I believe you said the next legislative session, if I caught that correctly, that would be a great legislative priority for us to set for the next session. And that would be right before we're putting in applications for that 2027 funding round, if that makes sense. So if we focus on the carpet this upcoming year, we get our legislative priorities in place. We can chat to our local legislators, et cetera, and maybe try to get something moving forward and, you know, get mobilized. And I'm sure the courts are going into that next session. So then we'd be on top of it and ready to go for that 2027, 2028 time period. You know, that's a little bit ways off, but that way it sounds like it's a pretty expensive project. And if they're planning on giving funding in the two to three billion dollar range for communities like Grand Forks who are getting new judges, that might be a smart way to go.
I can get on board with that.
And we have a legislative priorities meeting here, my calendar's not working, in three weeks, right? Okay, so that can be a point of discussion. Be great. And then we can follow up with the board after that. That's okay.
I just want to repeat, we, we need to think long term here because I have no desire to remodel that first floor to blow it up three years later. So whatever we plan, we should plan, assuming we're going to get a judge. Even if you built something and just left it empty, but you had the floor space for the jury room, the chambers, the courtroom, et cetera. But I I just, we have to be careful about that first floor sinking a bunch of money into it because if you remember now, we have that lot and there's a potential we could buy that house that's there too. And so we would have this whole city block that we would then control. So we need, we need to make sure we're thinking long term before we jump on this.
No, I am in complete agreement that the long term is a priority over any short term adjustments that are being talked about, so.
Think you wanted to say something.
Oh, go ahead.
I may, thank you, Gracie.
I think it's a pertinent point to make right now. We, we did conscientiously consider the old jail as something that could go away at any time. What we didn't consider is demoing the building that houses the boiler system. And I think the area you're talking about, Commissioner Birkey, is so part and parcel to that boiler building, that it'd be very
that it would be very hard to tear it down. Uh, you could, I mean, anything's feasible. Um, but we did consider keeping that first floor and second floor of the link because it's so entwined with the building that houses the boiler. But everything north that, in fact, if you go back on the slide, uh, actually, this was Luke's idea to kind of put a reference point in there. Uh, if you look on, would be slide thirteen. We have those little round bubbles with a number in it, the grid line references. Grid two is kind of the spot to the left of there, towards the Fifth Street side. That's the part of the building that can all go away. And then what's shown between grids two and one, again, it's sitting on top of the mechanical system that feeds the courthouse. So we're like, that has to stay. So hopefully that kind of does set the tone for the future and that was considered. And that's one of the reasons that Project Two, to move the detention, you know, the inmate travel path to the north to enter the link makes sense for the future. Again, it's essentially the same project cost as Project One and Project Two. Again, roughly two million dollars. Thank you.
I don't think we have any further discussion, we'll just move on ahead. Planning and zoning.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I got two items today, I will make it brief. First item is consider a variance application of Dallas Thompson to construct a fence twenty-five feet from the center line of County Road Five in uh section ten of Allendale Township. For, it it is within an existing subdivision, a two-point-eight acre lot. It's approximately halfway between Grand Forks and Thompson on County Road Five. Uh, as far as the background, Mr. Thompson, like I said, is uh proposing to build a fence around the perimeter of his property. It's shown on the site plan, there's also an elevation drawing of the proposed fence. Uh, it's uh being proposed to butt up against the seventy-five-foot road easement for County Road Five, Allendale Township's recommended approval of it. Uh, the county highway engineer and myself met with the applicant. And uh that that was the recommendation of uh Mr. West was uh the seventy-five-foot uh setback. And that would take into account all future right-of-way needs. Uh, as far as staff comments, uh typically in these situations, as long as it's not going to block snow on the road, uh, it's not an issue. I rely on Mr. West's recommendation. As you can see on the site plan, there's trees on both sides of the road already that are well-established, so that should not be an issue. Um, the planning commission did recommend approval at their uh
Move approval.
Yep.
All right, we have a person, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
All right. Doing him a favor.
We've heard it once already.
Second one's Michael Bitner, uh, this is a replat of Lot Six and Seven, Elm Cooley subdivision. What it is is just basically a simple lot line revision.
Move approval.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
All right, that's all I got.
Going home tonight, Lane.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Womsted, I think you are.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I would like to ask for approval of the facilities use agreement at Hope Church for the primary and general election in twenty-twenty-six with the chair's signature. And Ms. Womsted has reviewed with no issues.
Move approval. Second.
It's great, uh, it's, there was no cost, so this is free?
Right.
Okay.
They just wanted to reserve those dates.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Maybe Bob would give up his motion to let you do it since it's free.
No. I just want to make sure.
Very good. Any, any other discussion? Other than the cost, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
And we should, I'd like to give a thank you out to Hope Church for uh allowing us to use their property for voting for free, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Extend that to uh my colleagues at church, my, anyway. Uh, courthouse dome, Mr. Ford.
Hey. Thanks, uh, Madam Chair, uh commissioners, actually, I I would ask that we table that item. Uh, for now, it's 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 not ready for for presentation yet. But in your packets was the Tyler Technology Software Service Agreement. And this is the agreement I discussed at the last commission meeting. Um, by by accepting this agreement, um, we would proceed with the timekeeping, software upgrades, the HR portal and everything that's necessary. Um, so I'd be asking for um board approval to accept the service agreement and chair's signature.
Second.
I just want to clarify, so it's all, there's three different contracts or numbers there, so it's for all three?
Yes, sir, you you have the migration.
Sixty-seven, one seventy-seven, or one eighty-one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and and I don't have the breakout in front of me, but some of that is upfront implementation and then ongoing service.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have a, did we have a motion, sorry?
Cindy motion, that second.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
The the only quick update for the board is, as you know, um, Ms. Goditis is retiring December first, twenty-nine years with the county. Um, and um we're very thankful for for her time here and everything she's done. Um, I am pleased to let the board know that um Ms. Whitney Walsh, the the deputy tax equalization officer, uh, I extended her the offer and she did accept. So she, we're, we're, I'm very excited for Ms. Walsh to to start, she has a lot of experience. And Ms. Goditis um is an excellent mentor. So that will be effective November seventeenth. And no, that'll allow for some transition between Ms. Walsh and Ms. Goditis. And other than that, that's all I have.
Ms. Goditis left some really big shoes to fill, but I've heard nothing but positive things, including from yourself about Whitney. And so I'm very optimistic that it will go smooth. But yeah, I'd like to, uh, on behalf of at least one of the board members, thank Ms. Goditis for all this time.
Yeah. She actually started her career in the Grand Forks County Sheriff's Office.
She'll be missed, she she's a good one.
Oh, yeah.
She does.
Uh, it's attorney, Ms. Womsted. Sorry, were you done, Mr. Ford?
Yeah, you got anything, Haley?
Yeah, I have nothing for the board, thank you.
All right. Yeah, I thought we did.
Yeah.
The promotion for the Tyler Technologies?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, committee reports.
I got three, uh, the MPO were multiple long-range planning, two, five-year, two-year plan, five or so, we're planning a way we love, we have to with my favorite bike paths, buses and what am I, some pedestrians, I don't know, whatever, so nothing to do with the county. So uh, we'll continue on that. The fair rejected a a grant to uh fix up the grandstand. Uh, the data I have now, I'm still, the data Ms. Womsted gave me, I believe we have till twenty-thirty. We're still coveted to that grandstand. We have to fix it up historically. Uh, the vote was unanimous not to take that because then it would have extended it out even longer. My personal opinion, it's time to move on from that grandstand. The only time it gets used is by the races, the fair doesn't really use it. And we're just putting people somewhere to sit. And uh it is destroying their finances continually paying way more than what we should be paying to fix that grandstand because everything's got to look like nineteen thirty-seven. So uh uh they rejected it, so uh I hope we're going to see some change in the next couple of years financially with the fair. Where uh the director's working, we're looking at a big sponsorship potentially from a private company. So we're working hard to try and turn that around. The uh, we are entering negotiations with the Speedway. And so for our long-term contracts, we're working on that right now. And like I said, we're, we're working with someone, hopefully, I don't want to say the name yet, but try and get a a big sponsorship, somebody to help uh pay the bills at the fair. Uh, the emergency uh management had a meeting also. And I'll be adding this to my legislative committee when we meet is uh, there's four regions in the in the state that northeast, southeast, southwest, northwest, that, you know, train rolls over, the chemical plant blows up, whatever. And uh Grand Fork, we're one of them. And so we're going to be trying to get the state to pay for regional exercise every, one a year for every four years. So once every four years, everybody will get their shot. Uh, you know, you have turnover with people and some other things. And uh they they do have one at the airport, but that's always the same thing, basically, the plane crash. But we have other things that happen in the state, so we're going to try and get the state to fund that. And the big cost mainly is backfill, you know, you pull the people off the frontline, your sheriff's department, your police, your uh firefighters, et cetera. So we need to then call in somebody else to do their normal duties while they're training. So and then I've also asked her, she's going to look at some other, some other areas, the, obviously, the federal government's cutting back on some things. And frankly, it's just uh some of the stuff the state, we're going to have to look at the state just uh helping to pay for some of these emergency management. We don't want to be the county that has something happen and we're not ready. And I'm not saying we're not, so don't take it the wrong way. But but we need to practice. And so we need to make sure we're, we're doing what we should do uh in that area. Uh, so that's what we're working on between those three groups. Thanks. Troy.
Um, the library board met last week. Uh, one of the biggest items being discussed was that the elevator needed some fixing. And actually, the bid to fix it came in much less than anticipated. So that's a good thing. The human service zone board met this afternoon. A few people, a couple of retirements and some new positions that need to be filled continue to be unfilled. Um, there was discussion about the SNAP program, the food assistance. And uh they're concerned about if the federal government doesn't come back on before November first, then the SNAP program will not have any money. I believe the state was wondering if they could use their money to backfill the SNAP. And we're told no, that is not a possibility. So that was a concern. I believe that's all I have to report.
All right, uh, went to the UAS summit uh for two days, three days, whatever it was. Uh, it was very interesting, learned a lot, met some people I didn't know. And then uh yesterday, I met the Dr. Sins out at the coroner's office where she gave me her resignation. I have, I gave her credentials to Andy and and the resignation letter to Mr. Ford and HR. So that's all I got.
Um, so there's been a slight, I guess we'll call it, the delay or an irritation out at the airport um having to do with some uh, I guess we'll call them technical issues uh with some credit card readers. So there was people having to wait um a great deal of time to get out of their parking so that they could pay for it. Um, I've talked with leadership at the airport, um, they're on it, they're aware of the situation. Beyond that, that's all I can actually think of at this moment, so I'll turn it over to you.
Right. Uh, my uh big exciting thing that I did in the last couple of weeks, we had a table topic exercise, Mr. Ford was there as well at the Hive. There was a um, was a homeland uh CUAS threat. And we had a pretend city that mimicked Grand Forks and had a couple of rounds of discussion of what would we do, government and a couple of different other groups, um, if there was a unmanned aircraft threat. I think the synopsis of that conclusion is we really can't do anything other than manage on the ground any emergency issues that we have, taking care of human beings and that. So that is going to be a further discussion, there's going to be a white paper that comes out soon um detailing what came out of that meeting or that exercise. But there's, it's definitely a discussion that not only here at a local level, but legislatively federally that we're going to have to expand on because it is a real threat. And right now, there's really nothing that we can do about it, so. Other than people taking their shotguns outside and trying to shoot down.
It's my approach.
Yeah.
Um, I did have a question for you, Ms. Peach. So is there, is it just the SNAP program that would potentially be losing its benefits or is it the WIC program as well?
There, actually, there was discussion uh with the SNAP program and the WIC program. They were going to try to put it into the DOD uh funding for our military so they could get funded and hopefully try to get the SNAP program and the WIC program funded. They also did talk, we also did talk about housing because housing is also an issue. There's a lot of vouchers that come from housing and urban development. And so there's a lot of um unquestioned, unanswered questions that are coming forth with concerns of people living in poverty or needing additional assistance um so they can live from day to day.
Right. I've been seeing a lot of um conversations happen online and and through other mom groups that I've had with people very nervous, single moms, et cetera, that they're not going to have those funds available. And the one thing that I think about is the food pantries and and of such being empty, right now, they're already under pressure with funding and what have you. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do, but rally together and donate and give to those organizations and and help support that, those who can, um, because that's going to be a tough time.
We did talk about the uh local community, usually if it's an issue, you know, that's short-term.
Right.
It's usually easier to try to solve it from community support.
Right.
Something long-term would be much more difficult to deal with.
Yeah, I think it's a good opportunity for us to come together and help those, absolutely, so anyway, we'll move along here.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to uh recuse uh Commissioner Rusted from uh the next invoice that we have to deal with.
All those, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. All right, need another motion to approve.
I would make a motion then to approve uh the Grand Sky invoice.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously with Mr. Rusted recused. All right, we have some correspondence from the Altru Foundation, the North Dakota Water Convention, and the NDSU Extension Four-Eighths Program.
Move adjourn.
Very good.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, we are